Call this meeting order. Tonight, we're going to be led in the pledge by Mr. Jeff Reed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I'd like to welcome everybody to... We just started our first meeting, actual meeting, for the month of May. The work session. I trust everybody's taken a look at the agenda already, so, Mr. Odom, we'll just let you move on into it.
Any questions on the consent agenda? We've got lots of bids for Stewart's Creek High equipment and things. Did anybody see anything you want to pull out or talk about? I know I was surprised at the price of some musical instruments, like clarinets, five and $6,000 and all that. Expensive. And I guess number six then, when we move on?
Ah. Six or nine, whichever one.
The others, the others are six and seven, and eight are visitors, but that's presentations tomorrow night, six and seven. And number nine, this is the naming of the Oakland High School Stadium, and recommend approval, a motion to approve the name of Oakland High School Stadium, the Ray Hughes Stadium.
Very pleased it's being done. Very appropriate that it's being done. Kind of unfortunate, Mr. Hughes, from a health standpoint, tonight, in a position to enjoy as much as maybe could be.
Wasn't he the first football coach at Oakland? Number 10.
Number 10 is financial matters, and A is Valak 403B contract. The contract to Valak to provide service for Rutherford County School System's 403B plan was awarded five years ago. Staff recommends that this contract be allowed to continue on a year-to-year basis due to the low cost of both the system and our participating employees, and the wide number of investment options available to the participants. And the motion is to approve this on a year-to-year basis again, with the contract with Valak. Jeff can talk to that if you'd like to know a little bit more about that.
Why don't you go ahead and do that, Mr. Sandig, if you don't mind?
We went through an RFP process five years ago. Mr. Wayne Blair was on our committee, and at that point in time, the IRS was changing the regulations that govern 403B plans. And the, of the, we got seven proposals in. We had to hire a consultant at about $6,000 to analyze the proposals, and because they're, it is extremely involved. And we, we came to a decision pretty quickly between Valak and ING. And Valak, at that point, was, well, still is a subsidiary of what was...
AIG.
Draw a blank on it?
AIG.
AIG, right. But the Valak is basically a Texas domicile corporation, totally separate from, and the parent company could not access the assets of. Our money was very safe and secure. We checked that out, right? It was as our first payrolls were going in that all of that hit, back in 2008. But the Valak plan, it has all sorts of investment options, and as did the ING plan. And one, one of the factors that differentiated it with us over ING's plan was for those employees who want to have basically a brokerage account. The, the Valak account is through Charles Schwab, and is much more, you have a lot more options. But even if you don't want the brokerage contract, there are two, you can have a traditional annuity-based, you can have more, a stock-based, without the annuity wrap, and the fees were the lowest fees. The fixed, and a lot of our people put their money in the fixed interest-bearing account. And at that point, and the last time I checked, Valak had, they had held their fixed fee rate at or above what ING was offering. And, yeah, sure, once in a while, we're going to have some problems and all that. They've been minor. The main one I hear is people saying, I didn't, I haven't heard back from my rep yet, and I refer them to Tommy McLendon, who oversees the contract for us and MTSU, and we get it taken care of. But all in all, I've been very pleased with the performance, and they have worked with us when there have been minor glitches.
Any questions? Comments? I guess, Mr. Sandig, you may, you may just want to, we're going to go to B, so you may just want to discuss B also.
B is school nutrition. The cafeteria petty cash fund, cash on hand, accounts for the centralized school cafeteria fund 143. For each school nutrition location is currently approved for $10,650 for the purpose of making change. It is recommended to increase the amount by $1,200 for a total of $11,850 for the 2013-14 school year to include the new Stewart's Creek High School. So there's the list by school, and the recommendation will be to approve the petty cash funds as presented.
This is something that came about when we centralized our cafeterias. We have to have your approval and the county commission's approval for these petty cash amounts. We have to have it approved each year. The first couple of years, you saw some amounts go up and down. Some schools, they discovered, just because of the nature of their student bodies, needed more, more kids paid in cash than at other schools. And this year, the only change is adding Stewart's Creek High. Just a routine item for approval.
So the amounts are pretty well the same?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
How much of the cafeteria is done through some type of swipe system or account-based?
I would have to check on that figure. The number has grown greatly since we started.
It's ballpark, I mean, I just, a lot?
Yeah. I, I think it's substantial, but I don't, I do not know. But I, I can find that out for tomorrow.
I get more curiosity than anyone else, is, you know, how cashless we've been able to do more societies on.
Right. A lot of the folks, just anecdotally, from what I hear, have gone that route.
Does every school have the ability to do that?
Yes, sir. Every school has that ability.
You know, free and reduced things, things of that nature, they're already, they don't go to a loading system like that?
Right. Right. Yeah. Yeah. We have kept up with the changes that we've been required to make for the free and reduced, you know, just the certification model, you know, the various things we do to try to maintain privacy of who is on free and reduced. You have to watch that very carefully.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Sandig.
You're welcome.
Let me see.
C is the summer feeding program. Rutherford County School Nutrition Department requests the transfer of our summer feeding program from the Tennessee Department of Education School Nutrition Seamless Summer Feeding Program to the Department of Human Services DHS Summer Food Service Program. The reasons are as follows. In our most recent meetings, March 20th, 2013, the Tennessee Department of Education School Nutrition Department has strongly advised all SFAs to use the DHS program due to the stringent requirements established under the Health and Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010. Reimbursement rates will also increase, providing our system with greater revenue potential to serve our children. Current rate comparisons are as follows. State reimbursement for a rate of summer feeding per meal, breakfast is $1.55 and lunch is $2.92. The DHS reimbursement rate for summer feeding per meal is breakfast $1.80 plus 18 cents for administration costs for a total of $1.98. Lunch is $3.14 plus 33 cents for administration of costs for a total of $3.47. The recommended approval, motion to approve the transfer of our summer feeding program from the Tennessee Department of Education School Nutrition Seamless Summer Feeding Program to the Department of Human Services Summer Food Service Program as presented. And it has been, I think you said, with DHS before in time, so it's kind of gone back and forth some over the years.
So the DHS program has been there in years past?
Yes, it has.
Why would we not use it if it's a higher reimbursement?
We follow whatever the State Department of School Nutrition recommends we use. The rates change from year to year, in the course of a few years.
Anybody else? Number D.
Number D is Fund 141 for 2013-2014. This is our general purpose school fund budget, and you're going to have a copy that will look at some of that. As presented in the board's May 7th, 2013 budget meeting, the proposed 2013-14 budget for general purpose schools fund 141 has $286,286,293,321 in projected revenues and $299,994,865 in projected expenditures. The budget is currently out of balance by $13,701,544. The major area still being reviewed is teacher and support staff for Stewart's Creek High School. We used $9,252,756 from the fund balance in order to fund our 2012-2013 general purpose school budget. Recommend approval, is motion to approve the proposed 2013-2014 general purpose schools fund 141 as presented. A few things for you to look at tonight. I mean, one of them, I did put in there, I did a chart based on the state report card. You have got, well, it's a color chart. That chart, the red line is the state average expended per pupil according to the state report card for the last 10 years, from 2013 all the way through 2012. And the blue line is the Rutherford County Schools' average. The table for that is on the left, and as you can see, we've always been below the state average per pupil expenditure, and this 2012, the last year's reported on the state report card is $1,025 less. So that just kind of gives you some things to look at, that as a board, Rutherford County Schools, you've been very astute at spending student monies over the years, as you can see with our performance with the budget. Another thing that I found interesting and produced this for you is, what is our funding source according to the state report card? Where do we get our funds? The green chart above is federal funds. I find that interesting. It's not quite double, but from 2003, it was 5.7% of our budget, and you go to 2012, it's 9.7% of our budget. You see that little spike at 10.9 in 2011, and then jumped to 9.2. That was those arrow years, if you remember that stimulus ones kind of that came through. So some of that you see there. The red is your state funding, right? Currently, this immediate past year of 2011, 12, 52% of Rutherford County's funds came from state funding. So you had 52% and 9.7. So basically, and they rounded off numbers, the local funding that came from Rutherford County's taxes was 38.2%. But again, you can look at that and track back over the last 10 years about what part of our budget does come. We really do not know about the federal. Speculation is that that will probably be dropping back from what you're hearing in Congress, which you do not know. And that's primarily, you know, it's Title I, and some of it's your Perkins Fund for your CTE. Title II, teacher training, that sort of thing, is a lot of your funds that come through with, from federal, some of your biggest. I mentioned to you the other night that, you know, when we, each year, are planning for federal expenditures, that we have to extend an invitation to private schools, and I didn't know it had gone to homeschools and all too now, but I saw in the paper this morning, if you looked at the news journal this morning, that advertisement is in there, that we have, there's a date set, that they're to contact us and come by for a meeting if they're interested in participating in the federal funding, one of these other sources. But that was in the paper today. The other pieces, I think if you begin to look at, another thing which we do not have worked into the budget this time, there's another sheet, Mr. Tackett met with us and the principals the other night, other Friday, last Friday. And you had already received a copy of, in the, in the black type there, is the, the amounts we've been paying as supplements for certain coaching positions and all, that's there. We, we're going to meet some more tomorrow, and all, we haven't assigned percentages or tried to prioritize, but we'll have to do some prioritization. We'll not be able to do all of these, but everything in the red were things that came up during that meeting, Friday, as the middle school and high school people kind of brainstormed. You know, some, most of the things there are T double S double A, but some swimming and some other things are not necessarily that, but that's, that was some additions that they would look forward to, whether it's this year or sometime in the future, and our budget drives much of that, you know? That's kind of what we're talking about, so. We'll, we'll come with you some more information there. We spend roughly $1.9 million now in supplements, somewhere in that range. We'll come by and try to put some of this together.
I kind of wondered, with Mr. Odom today, if we were at this, might, I think in terms of some type of guideline is to how many schools participate, how many students participate in, and so, as, as a qualifier, almost, that we will need, so that we don't find one program, one school that just has a, out there by itself kind of thing. It seems to me that we need to have a fairly overall participation from schools for an event, you should really seek consideration. And I don't want to pick anything out, for example, but the one that, that was down here, for example, strings, and it only offered at Central Mac School. At that standpoint, we'd pick one at that place, it could be a chess club someplace else, so, so, maybe you get the idea, that some guideline is 75% of the schools need to be participating in that activity with a minimum, I don't know what the number could be, but that's something I would, I would think we might want to consider.
Minimal amounts, and I want, what's the minimum to do that? I think, to my knowledge, we do not currently have guidelines, have not when we were negotiating. Did we, Ms. Barnes? But we didn't have minimum guidelines for about, a school get a supplement if this many students participate, or anything like that. Maybe one of those things we need to look to.
Well, you know, I think we need to think in terms of, does it create more problems than it solves? You know, anything like that can be, but something for everybody, maybe let go through the brain for a while, and we can, we can deal with that some point.
You also have, and I was glad we did not vote the last meeting to approve the budget, because, again, there was a change in the insurance that the Budget and Finance Committee made the other night, which actually increased the amount from our board's participation now. Jeff, do you want to come up? We've actually adjusted the teacher numbers a little bit, but he can point out very quickly to you the areas that changed from what you looked at in detail, you know, a couple of weeks ago.
After looking at the teacher numbers, we were comfortable with taking five more out. We wanted to try to get just under $300 million again. The insurance added, took us to about $300 million, maybe $230,000, somewhere in there. And then by, by taking those five teaching positions out, and we're comfortable, we will have enough to cover our growth in Stewart's Creek without them, we got back under $300 million. I had a little tweaking on, I, I had a formula problem on some of the classified staff that I fixed, and I got the requisition for the grade books, and they'd gone up, so I changed the grade book number. But those were the changes from what we saw last week, and what we have, $5,135, under $300 million, so. But we can say it.
I appreciate, I'll just make a general comment. I think you just made those cuts yesterday, I guess, when, I applaud what you and the staff, Mr. Odom, which you were trying to do, keeping our total down. And, you know, as I said last meeting, I think, just looking at the overall budget, I don't think there's a whole lot of extras built in there.
We've got a lot of time to look at it, and I feel like we vetted it about as well as it could be, you know, or dissected as well as it could be dissected, because, you know, I, I woke up in the middle of the night looking at these figures sometimes, so, it's, but I, I feel confident, or I feel good about supporting it and admitting it onto the commission, because I just, I don't see, don't see any fluff in it.
It's a lean budget. It really is. Well, I mean, you, you historically have had lean budgets. We have looked at this, the line graph, and these charts, and you see, that says it is not one year, it's been a number of years.
Because the only local maintenance of effort we are required at the general purpose level is that our local revenues, and there, there are a couple quirks to it, that our local revenues in total do not drop unless our enrollment drops. And, you know, the, you can see, we, from what, what, we were about 43% in, in the first year on that graph, and down to 38 and a half, that's a major shift. Now, some of that was because of BEP2, which gave us a larger share of state funding. But still, the general trend has continued downward, where we have become more reliant. And if there were a maintenance of effort test based on per pupil out of local revenue, we'd have a lot more local revenue.
Mr. Chairman, I want to commend Mr. Sandig and Mr. Odom and all the department heads for a job of giving us a budget that we feel comfortable presenting to the county. So I want to just say publicly, thank you for all of it.
And if, I meant to go into the insurance change. What happened at Budget Committee last Thursday night, the first proposal that was, had a tie vote at the Insurance Committee the Thursday before, some of, there were some, obviously some calls, our, our little meeting room was full and overflowing with people, because there were some significant increases to especially full family coverage in that version that was passed. And the, the change that we did make here, and that the Budget Committee voted on, was going back to the, for our co-pay plan and our deductible plan, we pay 90 cent of, 90% of the employee cost, and go back to what the insurance talked about last year, dropping the cost, if you have dependents, we will be paying 87. This year, we paid 88. But the, the Insurance Committee and Commission talked last year about slowly, we know we need to pick up, have the employees pick up a larger share because these costs are going up, so. But we went back to what we had planned last year, and that there will be some, that will help some of our employees a lot, but we do still have a stiff increase in insurance for this next year.
Longer Budget Committee meetings, I called the last hour and a half on Channel 19, and y'all did not dismiss until 10 o'clock, so, Mr. Odom and Ms. Sandig were probably a little bleary-eyed the next morning, but it was, it was contentious.
That, the vote was four to three. So, I mean, they did talk about that there are very, well, maybe additional proposals Thursday night at the county commission meeting, you know, amendments to it, so that...
Well, I'm pleased that when we meet, when we do the joint meeting, I'm, I'm confident that we can defend this budget. And, again, we, we vetted it about as much as it can be vetted, so, I guess we'll, we'll see what we'll see.
I guess the thing that concerns me most is that we are depending still quite a bit on Indian fund balance from the prior year to try to balance the budget. And actually, our percentage is amount, we are, is less than the county general, I think, when you look at, we have a higher dollar, but in the percentage that you're having to allow, that it's higher there, so, that's, that's, looking forward, that concerns me.
Anybody else? Mr. Reed, Mr. Odom.
E, Fund 177, this is the 2013 Capital Projects Fund, Fund Budget. The proposed 2013-14 budget for Fund 177, Capital Projects has $2,376,189 in projected revenues and $2,465,958 in projected expenditures. The proposed budget uses $89,769 from account 34685. That's basically an Indian fund balance. Commended for Capital Projects to balance the budget. The second Capital Projects page shows the individual projects for 2013-14, and I believe you saw that at, at a prior meeting. Recommend approval, motion to approve the proposed 2013-2014 budget for Fund 177, Capital Projects, and the list of projects as presented.
Any comments, questions? Score number 12, Mr. Odom. I'll take number 12. General discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Odom, could you say again, the extracurricular supplements? Is there a committee that is looking into that? Does that need to be an agenda item? Where does this fit? Because, you know, it was kind of presented in budget, but it's not really a part of budget. I'm a little unclear as to what's transpiring.
It is in the budget. I mean, those supplements are currently in the budget. To add to the budget, we will have to go, and that's why I say I don't know if we can do it this year at this late a day, but we're going to start looking at it tomorrow. It'll take us a while to collect from schools how many students might do, so I, you know, I don't know whether we're going to be able to get some of these in. If we do, we, we come back to you, there might be one or two that's really probably out of line that we could probably, there might be enough to work it in the budget or do an amendment to the budget to do it at some point.
But not tomorrow night?
We'll look at it tomorrow, if we, if we can get to that particular point, but that's, it, I mean, it's pretty comprehensive when you start looking at it.
I agree, and it seems kind of a late hour to be altering that in this year's budget. I'm a little concerned about that without it being, you know, its own separate agenda item. You know, I'd, I'd rather see it come to us, you know, as a specific agenda item later, perhaps an amendment to the budget as opposed to trying to catch this. I feel like what you may present tomorrow night, you know, could be kind of a hurried response on this.
I don't, I agree with Mr. Odom. I think Mr. Tackett requested we look at all this stuff, so I don't think it was intention to build this thing in right away. Correct, Mr. Tackett?
I, we'd like, I'd like to see it addressed as soon as possible, but at the same time, we need to, it does need to be a timely fashion. Now, there's, there's nothing that's suggested to be done this year, if it can be. I'd love to see it.
Yeah. But it's something, it's something you had interest in looking at, and studying, so it's going to take, my guess is, the time you gather all your, your data and your facts or whatever, you know, you're going to be down the road here just a little ways, be my guess.
We'll give you another report. We can do it. We'll have to, we'll have to try to get that from the schools before they get away, too, to kind of give us a way to, to put it together.
I guess when they get it, we'll, we'll be able to. Anybody else, Mr. Reed?
Yes, sir. As we go through the summer with body of activities and celebrations, and we see our local legislative delegation members, I would like to remind board members that all of those issues that, that we faced in the legislature this year that did not come to fruition, quite possibly could next year. Things like the elected superintendent has, has been on, has been on that plate from seven years that I've been on this board, and I, I hope that we will continue to be consistent.[1800.48]
And I, I hope that we will continue to be consistent with our due diligence in talking to, to these elected leaders that the, these initiatives are not good for the system as a whole, the state, and they're definitely not good for Rutherford County. So every opportunity to reach out to our state senators and our state representatives, I think is more than warranted and deserving. And would, again, ask all members to take advantage of any opportunity they, they have to be with more than the occasions.
Maybe on track for the Charter School Report in June, which has to be done before July 1st, so that'll come up in the D and A.
Charter School Committee has met once, scheduled to meet Monday, as we correct it. For a second time, and I, I know that we've had a couple people do some pretty good digging. We made a trip to speak with folks in Metro, that have gone through this process a good bit more, so. Yeah, that, that, that report will be ready for board action in appropriate time. I think it'd have to be done by June the first. July 1st, July 1st, I think, you're right. Besides, I, I want to make a point, if I could, I couldn't help it yesterday. I had the privilege of going with my granddaughter, walking her parade to the National Zoo on a field trip. And I just couldn't help thinking back to the comment that was made at one of our previous board meetings that someone made, that they didn't feel like teachers cared as much as they used to care. And I, I sat there and watched these teachers that, that took the time out of their schedule. It would've been, I promise, it's much easier to stay at school, keep them captive, and take those little guys and let them wander the zoo. And I just admired all those, not only from that school, but from, from other places that, that are willing to do that and understand that if a kid gets hurt, gets hurt, gets lost, you know, whatever could happen, that they're, they're really putting themselves out on the line to, to give those kids those opportunities. And I admire them for that. And I'm gonna tell you this for a fact, there is a zoo within the zoo at that little playground area that you go in to the right. Jungle gym and so forth, there must have been a thousand kids in there. How somebody truthfully doesn't get hurt there sometime, I don't know, but they were having ball. But I, I just admire teachers for, for doing those kinds of things. And it, it's overlooked, but I'm just here to tell you, teachers care everybody as much as they ever did, if not more.
I agree. Thank you.
Anybody else?
We called it. You're good.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, none else. We'll see everybody tomorrow night, 5:00. We're going.